...of doing grants, so I'm going to defer it to you. You're going to tell us how to do it?
Um, sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Some of you have known, you've been provided the list of requests. Part of the process back in this, starting, I think, in July, the applications were, the application was posted on our website and applications were received until, I think, the second weekend in October. And so this, we compiled the list here. And this, what the spreadsheet, how the spreadsheet works is as you approve a request, there's 150,000 available to fund grants. So as you approve a grant, it will be entered and it'll come off, so you can see the balance remaining and also the dollar increase on the median home. So, right now, if that's all you approve, you'll actually be giving money back. But if you put in like 155,000, you'll see that it actually starts to increase your median home, your, the tax on the median home, so.
So, do you have the amount of the, of the total ask? If we were to give everyone what they wanted, what that number is?
Yeah, if you go right to the bottom, it's 341,000.
And we have 150?
Yep. Yes, yes.
All right. Let the games begin. Counselor Miller?
Mr. Mayor, I will move the first three requests for the Mount Pleasant Optimists Club, Scotland Optimists Club, and St. George Lions Club.
Any discussion?
The Oakland Athletic Association no longer canceled the program.
Counselor Coleman seconded it. Any other conversation? All those in favor, first three? Thank you, approved. We can see the total there, yep.
Okay. So, the next request, there's actually two requests from the Adelaide Hunter Hoodless Homes. The first one is for 15,000, one-time request to assist with the building of a working 19th-century health hearth kitchen.
Counselor Wheat, looking for a secondere?
Well, I'm moving it to get it on the floor. Can't do anything until you get it on the floor, John.
Counselor Coleman, or Counselor Coleman seconded it. Any discussion? Counselor Miller?
Just one caveat, and that is, and I think Counselor Chambers usually brings this up, so I'll bring it up this year. Okay. As we go through it, the ones on the first page aren't more important than the ones on the second page, so we have to be cognizant of that as we go through.
Thank you, Counselor Chambers.
And the other thing I usually say that David didn't say was that as we go through them, we may want to revisit some of the motions we've already passed, and we kind of do away with the reconsideration and all that, because I can guarantee you that we will overspend and we may want to go back and adjust. So I don't mind approving it now, but I reserve the right to come back and adjust it.
Thank you, Counselor Wheat.
Yes, I, just because there's a total at the bottom, historically, we've always gone over that. And Counselor Chambers said, things on the first page aren't any more important than the ones on the second page. Just because you've reached that so-called limit when you're three-quarters of the way through, doesn't mean you can stop. Because historically, we've always gone over, and I've been here for 15 years now, we've always gone over. It just adds a little bit of, little bit of tax dollars on the municipal tax levy is what it does. Doesn't kill us.
Counselor Goward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, originally, we never gave any money to this facility, and then one year, they came forward and asked for 1,500 dollars to celebrate their birthday, and it was supposed to be a one-time grant. Now, it's turned into a request every year, and I can understand their need to want to make improvements. And I did see the quote from a company in Berry that quoted on the work, but I, I'm more inclined to support the number-two grant than the first one.
I've only moved number-one. I haven't moved number-two.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other comments or concerns about the ask for number-one, for 15,000? All those in favor of supporting the ask? Two? Not even the secondere?
No.
Okay. All those, all those opposed? Now, at this point, do we tear the ask apart and give them what we think they should be getting? So we could take it down to 10,000, if that makes...
I think what you do now is have someone else who'll put another motion on the floor for a reduced amount, and I'm prepared to do that.
All right, Counselor Wheat?
I'll move that we give them 7,500, seeking a secondere.
Seeing no secondere, can we, oh, Counselor Chambers?
No secondere.
Okay, no secondere, so we have a new motion on the floor? Counselor Chambers?
What I would suggest that we do is just leave that right now, and then at the end, come back to the ones we leave, and then, again, like, I may want to give something if we have capacity, but that's what I would do.
The second ask is for 2, 2,500. Counselor Pierce, seconded by Counselor Ferrier. Questions, Counselor Pierce?
Yeah, I'll speak to that if I could. I can't support the 2,500, but we've given them 1,500 in the last two years, and I could support that. So I'd put a motion on for 1,500, not the 25.
Counselor Ferrier, and Counselor McAlpine?
I have a secondere.
You'll second it? We have a secondere. Did you second it?
You're amending it, then?
For the 15.
For the, for 15. I feel like an auctioneer now.
I can't support the 25, but I would, I'd make a motion for 15.
15, okay. And we have a secondere by Mark. Any other comments, concerns? All those in favor of 15? Okay, thank you.
Uh, next is Aiden Johnston, for a sponsorship request to help pay for travel and accommodations for the Red Bull crushed ice season.
I'll move...
Counselor Wheat?
I move the 1,000, and I'll speak to it, if I get a secondere.
Secondere, please. Counselor Coleman, it's on the floor, and he can, want to speak to it?
I'll be brief. Last year, we, for the last two years, we've had the female be the Ice Crashed Ice Champion. We so honored that young lady. Granted, she's from St. George, and put her picture and plaque on the wall in our South Thunfries Hall of Fame, and this young lad is following in her footsteps. He's already been to, he's already been to Japan this year and made the final go. If you're a rodeo fan, you've made the final go-round. And right now, he's in Finland, competing, representing our country. And he's just a youngster, he's only 17-years-old.
Any other comments? Counselor Miller?
A question. I don't know the young man, and I'm not a big believer in the ratepayers supporting people to go overseas, but he could be a good ambassador. Is he a good character?
His, his, his uniform says "Canada."
Maybe we could put County Brant on it or something, but, okay.
Counselor, Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I did have, like, like I said, I've got questions that I had written down for some of these, and it might be too late to do it this year, obviously, but I'm wondering if it's something that we look to in the future, if we go the other way, whatever, to have these folks here that are requesting these grants? Because the question that I have, because it talks in there about the sponsorship to provide opportunity to purchase new equipment, like, have they looked into potentially, I'll take the sports store in town, the equipment for the, the Red Bull, our skates and helmets and that sort of thing, right? I, I'm wondering, like, is, is there any other sponsors, and is there, like, have they looked into any stores for equipment? So it's, it's difficult for me to, to make a decision on some of these things when, when they're not here. So it's, it's, I don't know, it's a tough one.
And that is the magic of a third-party looking at them, because it's not our business to know that, uh, through a request. Where they buy their skates, or where they get their haircut, it's of no concern to this table, I don't think. That's why it really does, does need to be a new set of eyes, because we can't make everything our business. We have...
No, and I appreciate that, but I'm just wondering, has that been looked into? You know, and that's, to me, that's important information to understand.
That's something they'd probably do once we say no to them. I mean, they would, they would have further investigation as to how they're going to get their money. Who knows whether they've asked anyone before us, or we might be their last choice. Again, not up to us to know all of that. Counselor Wheat?
I'm, I'm sure he has got sponsorships from other organizations, because $1,000 won't pay for a flight to Japan and back, and then to Finland and back, and then next month, he's going to be in Boston, although it'll be on this continent, but you can't fly to Boston for much less than $1,000 bucks.
So we have a secondere? Any other conversation to this? Counselor Chambers?
Okay, this, this is another one of these little quirky things that, that make people look bad in, in some eyes, but I, I'm not going to support the, the recommendation. I don't know the, the individual, it may be a wonderful thing. What I would sooner do, because I, because I know there are other individuals in the county, both young and old, that are going here and there and could be great ambassadors for the county. What I would sooner do is allocate an amount for that type of thing in the budget, and then deal with them with that in mind, because there, there could be four more people come and want this equally. So, I'm not going to support it, but I would support an allocation of, let's say, four or $5,000 to be four, uh, traveling sports ambassadors, or whatever you want to call it. But to pick and choose, person by person by person, is not the way to do it in a public session, because it just creates winners and losers, and people who support losers and winners, and, and that's unfair to everybody. So, again, I'll, I'll be intrepid and say, I don't support this particular request as it is formatted here, but I may support it if it's in another venue.
Any other conversation? Counselor Coleman?
I'm not using the damn mic.
All right.
The format's already laid out in front of us. We have to deal with what the format is in front of us tonight. If you want to change the rules, you've got to change the rules and start over the whole process again. So let's support whatever it comes in front of us tonight, and we deal with it. Make a new set of rules after we get this process done.
Counselor Wheat has a secondere? All those in favor of supporting the ask? Opposed? Carried. He gets his grant.
Was it carried?
Yep.
Yeah, well, carried.
It was carried.
Did you vote against it?
No, I voted for it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The next request is from the Air Paris Band for $2,000, purchase of music scores and music stands for the junior band program.
Counselor Ferrier, looking for a secondere?
Sire.
Counselor Wheat seconded. Any conversation? Anything to be added? Any concerns? Call the vote, want to support the grant? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The next request is from the Blessed Sacrament School, 15,000, to enhance the outdoor learning space for students. Provides a space for lessons, meditation, and quiet reflection.
Someone make the motion? Counselor Goward?
No, I'm not moving it, I'm sorry.
Why, why have you got your hand in the air?
I wanted to speak to it, sorry.
You can't, you can't speak to it until it's on the floor, sweetie.
Sorry.
We need it on the floor. Thank you, Counselor Pierce, secondere?
Second.
Counselor Coleman? Okay. Counselor Goward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the school board should be paying for this, not us, and I can't support it.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to it? Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Again, this, it's a tough one here, because they're asking for a good chunk of change here. I appreciate what they want to do, but when you look at page 1358, and it's got their, it's, it says, "Detailed category summary, all transactions to date." It's one line. It says absolutely nothing, other than the fact that they have $4,000 in the bank account. And the note that they put underneath of it says, "Current school council bank balance, most of the money is already spoken for other support activities in the school." Like what? This is the, the problem I have. I, I can't support that.
Okay, the motion that is brought forward is for the full amount. If it's defeated, we can try again. All those in favor of the full amount? It's defeated. Looking for a motion, Counselor Coleman?
I thought we were going no.
Oh, we, we sort of just did. All those in favor of supporting it? Okay. All those in favor of turning it down? It's defeated. New motion on the floor for a suggested amount to give to these people? Counselor Coleman? Five grand, and I do feel like an auctioneer. Do I hear a secondere? Counselor Chambers? Any discussion at, you said 10? Five. You said five.
We're not selling that grant.
Oh my God, five! Any conversation to five? Counselor Goward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we're setting a precedent here if we start funding school playgrounds. We have many schools in the province, and if we, or in the province, in the county of Brant, several, and if we start giving one funding, we're going to have them all coming and asking for funding. So, I'm sorry, but I can't support even $5,000.
Anything else to the 5,000? Counselor Ferrier?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Goward, just because of the system of it. Unfortunately, we've had a number of schools in Paris and a number of schools in other places that have been desperately seeking funding for additional playground equipment and things like that. We have one just down the street that looks like a prison yard, and we're not funding those. Again, if we had a system, as Counselor Chambers has talked about, or maybe this community foundation point system we could look at next year, please reapply, but I, at the current system, I can't support it.
Any other discussion at 5,000? Counselor Wheat?
I'm going to support it. Not so much for the money. I'm going to support it because this council has been criticized for the last number of years of looking at Paris only. We're trying, and, and, and that's wrong. That criticism is wrong. We do look at other parts of the county. And here's an opportunity, like Burford, we're, we're trying to bear the, the lines on Main Street. You can't do everything overnight, but here's an opportunity to put some money into that community. Yeah, they asked for 15, but we're, motion on the floor is for five, and I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Counselor Wheat. Counselor Coleman?
Here with Mayor. Every school or every organization in this county has a right to apply for a grant.
Yes, it do.
So it's no different, and then maybe we'll, maybe we'll expand it for next year or whatever, there may be other schools. But I can agree with Coleman, I am supporting it, and I think it's, I think it's an opportunity that we can do something for, for Blessed Sacrament.
Any other discussion? Call the vote to give them $5,000 on their 15,000 request. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, I encourage you to vote, because if you don't vote, it's a no vote.
Oh, all right. I was, I was getting off on being the auctioneer.
Just so you don't get in, don't, don't back yourself into a corner and get criticized that you didn't vote.
Thank you, sir.
People watching on their computer.
Thank you. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The next is for Bite of Brant. They're requesting $1,000 to provide students with a, with a local apple, milk, and pizza, help subsidize the bus and costs.
We'll move, we'll move.
Counselor Miller, Counselor Coleman, any discussion? All those in favor of the ask? Opposed? Grant given.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The next request is from the 4H, for $3,000 to help offset the cost of delivering the 4H program.
Counselor Coleman?
I'll put a motion on that for, to give them 1,500 dollars.
Secondere for 1,500, Counselor Chambers? Any discussion on 1,500? Counselor Pierce?
Again, Mr. Mayor, I, I totally appreciate what they do, so don't take it that way, but 2017, we gave them 400, then 2018, we gave them 750, and now, all of a sudden, it, it's going up and up and up and up. I, I can't support that.
Any other conversation? Counselor Chambers?
I do support the grant request that the Counsel from Coleman, and former 4H club member back in the theater. It's a great opportunity to show youth leadership and look at what happened at the question.
Oh my God. Oh dear.
I did finish, I had a hint in the corner, I'll be receiving it.
Counselor Ferrier?
I'm going to be supporting this. I think opportunities like this are a good one to show that we're not a Paris-focused council. I think that criticism is levied, sometimes fairly, sometimes unfairly. I'm very concerned about a Paris-versus-everyone mentality developing and being promoted. However, I will say, 4H is a cross-county wonderful organization that does a lot of great work, and happy to support it.
Okay, so, Counselor Goward?
And I, I did, Counselor, the Ferrier's comments. We are an agricultural community, Brant County. It's our largest industry, and encouraging our young people to participate in 4H is a great thing. It gets them involved at an early age, and so, yes, I support wholeheartedly the 1,500 dollar grant.
Counselor Chambers?
Just to assist in the understanding, 4H is no longer an agricultural organization. It's the whole spectrum. There are as many urban 4H club members as rural 4H club members, so that's why we needed an awareness of, of 4H, and that's why I support the grant.
Well, don't forget, if the 1,500-dollar alternative doesn't go through, you can always give them more money. All those in favor of 1,500? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Next.
Next request, through you, Mr. Mayor, is from the Brant County Community Policing for 350 dollars, purchase of two retractable banners to be used at events.
Counselor Miller puts it on the floor, seconded by Counselor Goward. Conversation, concerns? Counselor Chambers?
I, I, I support the grant of 1,000, or whatever it is, but I, whatever it is, but I, I, I would put it even more, because that's something that, again, can be community-wide, and we need to establish that as a, a good thing in the county. But I don't like the fact that they're spending it on banners. I'd like to have it spending on organization of a community policing thing that it seems to be up and down as, as time goes on. Sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down. They need funds to keep it up there. But to spend it on banners, seems like kind of a funny thing to spend it on when we are trying to establish these things.
Thank you, Counselor Ferrier?
To, to provide some context to that, part of the reason that they're asking for the request for banners, and I've, I've spoken to some folks about this, is because they are having a hard time with consistency of volunteerism, and they're looking at this as a way to, to stand out a little bit at booths, and a way to get more input and buy-in from the community volunteer side. So if it, if it gets some volunteers, it's, it's 350, not 1,000. 350 dollars well-spent, in my opinion.
Any other, Counselor Goward?
And I'm sure that the banners would be available to use in all communities.
Counselor Chambers?
I, I will make an amendment to that, to request, that it be 750 dollars, no strings attached. If they want to buy banners, fine. If they want to spend it, no strings attached, 750.
There's already a motion on this, I'm seconding.
Yeah, but I can amend it, just like you did, to an increased amount.
The amendment has been made for 750? Any conversation to the amendment? Call the vote? Joan, you have a question?
Just, just a comment. The reason being is, I wasn't even sure that that was enough to, to buy two banners. But this group does do a lot of good work, and they go out into other communities, they do the Lock It or Lose It program, and they are struggling, and we need to support them so that they can spend their time and efforts on actual community policing ideas and actions, rather than fundraising.
Maybe we could put a piece to that, too, where they don't make it sensitive to any timeframe, just make it a neutral banner that's not for any festival or any one occasion, it's just a police banner that can be used over and over again and not wasted after an event or a date.
Yes, and I, I would expect that that's, because there are three community policing groups, Mr. Mayor, and the Paris group seems to be the strongest, but we do need to work on that.
Counselor Wheat?
Yes, I, these banners are going to be movable. They're not going to be planted in the ground somewhere. They're going to be able to travel them around. I, I like the 350. I'm going to vote no on the amendment to 750, because I'm sure they've done their research and found out this is what they need. They need 350.
Counselor Ferrier, oh...
If they needed 750, they would have asked for 750.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also going to not support the 750, but I will support the 350. I think there are other, yeah, community crime, folks that we may or may not say yes to, and I, I don't think it's fair to give one group more than they even ask for when other groups we may not give, that are doing the same type of work, where we may give and give a different amount, so. I will, I won't support this, but I will support the 350.
Let's call the vote to support the 750. All those in favor? Opposed? New, new motion on the floor? Defeated.
Original.
Back to the original. Counselor Pierce and Counselor Coleman, any discussion? 350, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The next request is from Brant Cycling Club, 5,000 to help support the trail development and maintenance crew, to purchase tools and equipment and safety training.
Moving to get it on the floor, and I want to speak to it.
Counselor Pierce, yeah, Counselor Pierce. Counselor Ferrier? Counselor Pierce wants to speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. So, if you read, if you read through this, there's a couple of things that really stand out to me, and one of them in their expenses is bike apartment, bike park development fees, okay? So the only bike park that I'm aware of is the one in Branford. So I'm trying to understand, as I read through these things, the bulk of this is stuff that is in the city. I don't see much here that's going to be involving in the county. You know, I know we have talked about Barker's Bush and potentially doing something there, but I, I, I don't see a lot of that in here. So I can't support the 5,000. I, I may make another motion if, in fact, that go, that fails, but I, I can't support it at 5,000.
Thank you. Staff wants to speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have been in discussions with the Brant Cycling Club about work at Barker's Bush. They already have a volunteer crew, actually, that's been doing a little bit of work in there. If you also read further into this, this could be a multiple if they get money from us, as well as the Brant Waterways Foundation. Plus, they've already committed 5,000 of their own dollars, so it could be a tripling effect potentially, or more than they've asked for. So I think it is a good step in the right direction. There's 100 acres that we, we need to deal with there. So having a volunteer stewardship program, I think, would be a real benefit to the community.
Anyone else want to speak to it? Counselor Ferrier?
Yeah, I did, I did meet with this group, and I'm sort of in the middle. I think in time, I, I would, I'm, I'm not going to vote for the 5,000. In time, though, I, I would, I hope they come back, especially if Barker's Bush becomes a reality, because I think it'd be better support. I would support, you know, 1,500...
We're not there yet.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Counselor Goward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this club is primarily in Branford?
They're expanding.
And in 2017, they got 160,000 dollar grant from the government, and another 100,000 in grants revenue, according to this statement of revenue and expenses. And I know the facilities manager, Ms. Valentine, was up here and explained about trails maintenance? But we have our own trails in the county. Why aren't they using those?
She said that they were for our trails that were being developed.
I'm sorry?
She said that they were for our trails being developed, some of this money. Counselor Ferrier?
Yeah, they, they're actually looking at, what they want to do with this money is utilize it to, to fund essentially training and equipment for volunteers to do maintenance to county trails. And there are county trails there and they, they do it as volunteer crew. A lot of municipalities, Halton, Hamilton, and Branford have this. Their big grant money last time, context of that is for, was, most of that was for a specific bike park in Branford. So it's kind of, a lot of that was one-off. But they, this money will be used in the county, however much we decide or don't decide to give them.
And if I might, I, I've been told that in the past, many times, that we don't allow volunteers to work on our facilities because of the liability issue. So now is there a change in that philosophy?
I don't think there's a change to that philosophy as far as the county.
Because I, I, you know, I suggested that we have students do work for their 40 hours and, oh no, it's a liability issue. We can't do that. So is this different because these volunteers are going to be trained?
I don't have that information. I'm not staff or in the Brant Cycling Club.
Okay, so what we have now is 50, sorry, $5,000 on the floor. All those that want to support it? Anybody? Opposed? New motion? Counselor Pierce?
I would do 2,500.
2,500, seconded by Mark. Any discussion on 2,500? Call the vote, all those in favor of 2,500? All those opposed? Defeated. Do we have another number? Counsel, Counselor Pierce?
2,000.
2,000, seconded by Mark. All the, discussion? Support for 2,000. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so what are we going to do with this? Counselor Pierce?
1,999.
Oh my God. Yikes. Counselor Chambers?
I'll move that no grant be given at this time, again, keeping in mind that we can come back to it.
Seconder for nothing, Coleman, all those in favor? Have nothing at this point? Opposed? Okay, they're getting nothing right now.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the next request is from Brant Food for Thought. 5,000 to purchase fresh local produce, white milk, milk products, whole grain, breads and cereals.
Counsel, Counselor Coleman puts it on the floor, Counselor Gatward seconds it. Discussion, Counselor Pierce?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things with this, and, and again, don't get me wrong, I absolutely think this is fantastic, what they do. But when you read through it and they have, pardon me, I, when I was on the 10, I wrote down the page here, bear with me. When you look through it here and it talks of, hang on, no, no, I, I have my own little notes here, sorry. On page 13, 122, again, I want to make it perfectly clear that I absolutely support what they're doing here, but the second paragraph, when it starts out, "For the 2017-2018 school year, the Brant Food for Thought chose 35 schools to support." My question is, how do they choose the schools? How many of those schools were in the county? There, there's none of that that's listed in here. I'm just, I'm trying to, I didn't see it. Show me, sorry.
Counselor Ferrier?
They choose it based on need and they support seven programs in the county, including Paris, Burford and Scotland.
Which page are you on?
That's on 13, 102. And it is based on need. It's also, there's a couple of different information points that they, they utilize from school reporting, some census data and things like that. I just happen to know some of this, but, but number six in 13, 102 says, "The grant will support local produce exclusive to the county of Brant from January to June. Participating schools will be subject to food funding allocations process. In the current school year 2018-29, we supported seven programs representing 2,278 elementary and secondary school students in Paris, Burford and Scotland." I will be supporting this because it's also cross-county.
Any other conversation? Counselor Wheat?
I'm supporting it in the key, key words, "to purchase fresh local produce, milk products, whole grain, breads and cereals." And the, just Dominion's Food Guide just put agriculture on the back burner and threw us under the bus.
Any other comments? Conversation? All those supporting the motion? All those opposed? It's carried. They get their grant. Thank you for your support.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the next request is from Brant Branford Crime Stoppers for $3,675 to cover the increased cost of accounting fees.
Counselor Ferrier?
I'll, I'll put a motion out to support it.
Looking for a second, Counselor Gatward? It's on the floor. Is there any conversation? Counselor Gatward?
Thank you. Well, everyone will recall when Inspector Anderson was here with her budget, she mentioned Crime Stoppers and how valuable they were, and they are a volunteer organization. So it's unfortunate that they can't find a volunteer accountant, but, but I, I think it is a very, very good cause and it saves the county money in the long run. So I do support it.
Counselor Ferrier?
Yeah, this isn't about a volunteer accountant issue. It's, there's provincial legislation that requires them to have a, a costed accountant to do the full books, even though they're a small organization. So it's outsized. I will say, I was former chair of Branford Brant Crime Stoppers or Brant Branford. It's mostly a majority county members on the executive and that's increased actually since I've left, so I don't know what that says about me. But in addition to that, I happen to know things about them that they struggle with fundraising because they're not allowed to advertise their successes specifically. They can't have the convenience store owner whose, whose funds were received, recovered, talk about it because it might show confidentiality issues. They're not allowed to say that this was solved because of Crime Stoppers. But there are major national and local crimes that are solved because of Crime Stoppers and that's not allowed to be reported. And so that's where they come up against a real fundraising issue. Every other charity is able to say exactly what they've done with the money, exactly what it led to and, and show the deliverables. Only executive members of Crime Stoppers are able to know what that means because if somebody wants to find out that the, the crime was solved because of Crime Stoppers, they're a criminal, there could be retribution. So it puts them at a real disadvantage for fundraising.
Any other conversation or comments? Okay, we're going to call the vote now to give them 3675, what they've asked for. All those in favor of supporting them? Opposed? It's carried. Next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the next request is from Branford Aquatic Club for 10,000. Upgrade electronic equipment to support programming and host competitive events, including local and elementary and high school swim meets, regional, national and international swim competitions.
I'll move it to get it on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Seeking a seconder, Counselor McAlpine? It's on the floor. Any discussion? Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of notes I, I did on this one here. The current page 13, 139, and not that it, not that it's a huge thing, but just something that I picked out here. If you look at the Board of Directors, I see, and correct me if I'm wrong here, somebody's going to, I'm sure, but I don't see any county residents on that Board of Directors, number one. If you flip over to page 13, 141, at the bottom there, their, their biggest expense, and I, I understand, uh, uh, coaches are a fair amount of money, but when we're talking $169,000 for coaches, I, I'm trying to understand, you know, how many of these coaches are there? How many are, how many kids are they, they coaching? And again, it's difficult to get these questions answered when they're not here. I can't, I can't support that full fund is where I'm going. I cannot support the 10,000.
Counselor Gatward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is a city club at the Wayne Gretzky Sports Center, and I'm sure that we do have some county kids that swim there. We don't know how many are in this club, I don't believe, but I can't support this. I think they should be getting their funding for the electronic equipment from the city.
I'm speaking to this just as, as past chair of the foundation, this would be not acceptable for a grant by us, by the foundation, but it wouldn't be turned away. It would be sent back for clarification. When a Board of Directors is this sort of, and there's not one address in the county, we would, we would send it back for clarification. So, I mean, we don't have that process here, so we'll call the vote to see how far it goes, but in the, in the land of the foundation, it wouldn't, it wouldn't fly. With that being said, it's on the floor, it's been seconded. All those in favor of the $10,000? All those opposed? It's defeated. Is there another motion to bring it up at any other? Counselor Chambers?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Wheat. Any discussion? Voting on giving them nothing right now? All those in favor? Opposed? And we're just going to put them to the bottom of the barrel just for a while. Next.
Second.
Hey, hey. That doesn't seem quite right. Counselor, Counselor Coleman, seconded by Counselor Chambers. Any, any discussion on 2,500? Counselor Chambers?
I'm, I'm going to move an amendment. I'm looking forward that the, the Paris Agricultural Society is asking for 4,000. The Burford Agricultural Society at their annual banquet, actually I'm one of the auditors, they had a very bad year last year, and I was going to suggest that an additional one-time funding help be granted this year. But what I'll do is I'll make the motion that it be 4,000 to be consistent with the Paris Agricultural Society, and if you want to take them both at the same time, I would...
So you're not amending this one? You're just...
Yeah, I, I, I would amend it to 4,000 based on the fact that it would be consistent with the Paris agricultural request, that it would help fund a, a significant shortfall in last year's funds, last year's final...
Seconder for the amendment? Counselor Wheat?
Well, yeah, I'll second, then I'll speak to it.
Okay, so it's on the floor and it's being seconded. Any more conversation? Counselor?
What if we don't give Paris 4,000? That's the Paris request. Yeah, so why don't, my suggestion is give them 2,500 now and then come back at the end of the day for the other 15, if we, if we pass Paris at 4,000. You had a couple of Counselors Chambers that, where we, we said you wanted to come back and I agreed with you.
Don't yell at me, I'm not...
The amendments on the floor. It's been seconded by Counselor Wheat. More conversation by Counselor Pierce?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a, first of all, I think it's a, a good idea to do them both at the same time. I think that's a, that's a good idea. But my issue in the notes that I had, you know, we're talking about all the Paris stuff here, the notes I had for the Paris Agricultural Society, again, if you look at trends, right? It was 2,500, then it's 3,000, now they're asking for 4,000. Again, I totally support what they do and, and I understand that the money will be, will be put forth, but again, if we just keep going up and up and up and up, we're going to get ourselves into trouble as we go through the years, right? So I can't support 4,000 for Paris, so I'm not going to support 4,000 for Burford if we're doing them at the same time to give them the same amount.
Counselor Miller?
Just, yeah, real quick, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's, I don't know why they asked for 2,500, because they, they've been, they've been struggling for a while, but it's, it's been running for, how long has it been running? Over 100 years anyway, since before Confederation, so I, 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 I would support a little bit more this time out, so I'll support the amendment.
So the amendment is at 4,000? Is there any more conversation before we vote? Counselor Chambers?
I will be specific to the amendment, that an additional $1,500 be allocated this year to make up for a shortfall in their 2007, 2018 operating year. They had a significant shortfall. It was a bad year for them, so you can deal with Paris however you want, but my motion is that an additional $1,500 be allocated for this year as a one-time grant in addition to their regular request.
So a seconder, hello?
Can we have the clerk read the, read the motion? That we're voting on?
I'll speak to it when I get a chance.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the current motion on the floor is an amendment to the original motion, which was moved and seconded for 2,500, and that the amendment is that an additional $1,500 be allocated as a one-time grant in 2018 to cover operating shortfalls, an operating shortfall?
Seeking a seconder, Counselor?
No.
Or Counselor Miller, sorry. Conversation, comments?
Well, the 2,500, that's moved and seconded. I think we can vote on that 25 and then a separate motion come forward, not an amendment, a separate motion for another 1,500. And I will support that, but I won't support it as an amendment.
But it's an amendment.
And I think we should vote on that 25 and then Counselor Chambers brings forward a separate motion, which I will second, for an additional $1,500.
Okay, that ship has sailed. It's on the floor right now for 4,000. It's got a seconder. I'm going to call the vote for the 4,000. All those in favor?
For the amendment first.
Yeah, no, no, 4,000. All those opposed? They get 4,000.
I voted for it, but I just didn't like the way it was done, but I supported it.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the next request is from the Canadian Warplane Heritage Museum Airshow for $10,000.
Counselor Miller, Counselor Coleman, any discussion? Comments? Call the vote?
Oh, I have a comment.
Counselor Gatward?
Well, in 2017, we approved 5,000. We gave them extra money last year, but I thought when they presented that they did fairly well and they made a profit. And we are supporting them with fire and all the things they mentioned in their presentation. So I, I would rather see the grant stay at 7,500.
It's not at 7,500, it's at 10,000. And after it's defeated, you can take it back to 7,500 if you like.
No, I, well, I know it's at 10,000, but I would, it was 7,500 last year, that's why I said I'd rather see the grant stay at 7,500 and not be raised 2,500. So I'm not going to support the 10,000.
Okay, the 10,000 is on the floor, it's being seconded. Any other conversation? Counselor Pierce first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Again, we've all been there, it's, it's a fabulous couple of days, which is great, but if you, if you look at the end of it, when they do all the totals up and they end up giving money back, which is great, don't get me wrong, I like, I totally support the, the foundations they give it to, but again, we're, as each year goes up, there's more and more and more. So I cannot support the 10,000, but if Counselor Gatward were to, if it's defeated and another motion is put forward, I might be able to support that.
At this point, I'm going to declare a conflict on this, because I've co-chaired it and I belong to the Rotary Club that has partnered with it, so I'm going to call a conflict. Any other conversation?
No, you don't, just because you're part of the organization, you're not gaining personally financially, you do not have to declare a conflict, David.
I would feel more comfortable declaring the conflict. Okay, so it's on the table for 10,000. It's being seconded. Counselor Chambers?
Just procedurally, if you declare a conflict, they shouldn't be even talking about it, but, but setting that aside, and I understand your, your point, I don't support the, the request for the following reasons. That they made a $50,000 profit last year and their profit goes, it used to go to United Way when United Way was involved, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, this year or last year, it, the excess essentially goes to the Rotary Club for their good work, but, and I'm looking at this as a $10,000 contribution to the Rotary Club, because that in essence is what it is at the end of the day, and I don't support that. If they were losing $50,000, I would be all in on 10,000, but they're making $50,000 a year and it's something that, to grant an organization on an event that has a $50,000 profit that goes to a particular organization, I don't support that. And I, I have set my pace, so I won't support anything with the current financial position that they're in.
Counselor Gatward?
Thank you. And I agree with Counselor Chambers, and it was the also split between Rotary and the Heritage Warplane Museum, which is in Hamilton. So, and the United Way is a county-citywide charity that supports many agencies that we, that struggle and need funding, but certainly the Rotary does a lot of good work with the Boys and Girls Club, et cetera, et cetera, but there's taxpayers out there struggling and that 2,500 could be used for something in the county.
Counselor Wheat first?
Two things, through you, Mr. Mayor. It doesn't matter to me who got the profit, it's the Rotary Club. Let's suppose that Rotary Club didn't step up. We didn't have someone to take this over two years ago, and that club stepped up and took it over. If, if they made money, Rotary Clubs, Lions Clubs, Miltz Clubs spent money back into the community and they help and out in many, many different ways. Just because they made $50,000 last year does not mean they're going to make $50,000 this year. this year. It's very, very weather-dependent, and that airshow brings a lot of people into the County of Brant.
Anyone else want to speak to the airshow? Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and if I remember correctly, the Rotary kind of backed out of that, and the Canadian Warplane Heritage stepped into it because they needed a sponsor, and that's why the profits went up last year, because the banquet was a much bigger success when they had it down in Hamilton. Those profits get plowed back into the municipality, just like Counselor Wheat has said, it is a good program. I'm supporting it. Call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Chambers first, then we'll call the question.
Again, I don't want to upset anybody on this, but I don't agree that it goes back into the community of Brant County. It goes back into the broader community, and I would, again, reiterate that the tax dollars that are funding programs that, for broader sector charitable work, is fine, but it technically does not go back into this community specifically, because the Rotary Club expands across the whole spectrum and perhaps into other communities as well, so again, the $10,000 grant can be applied to better opportunities for this community than the airshow, and granted, it does bring people in for one day, but again, looking at the budget of $10,000, when they make 50, it's like a gift to them, as far as I'm concerned.
Any other comments before we call Counselor McAlpine?
Well, I'd just like to say that I do support, but at a lower level, so that we were consistent with what we've gave in the past, so if we were given $7,500 consistently, knowing it is weather-dependent, and just, yeah.
I think we need to defeat the $10,000 before we can lower it. Counselor Gatward?
No, Mr. Mayor, we could have an amendment to the motion for $10,000 and vote on an amendment, so I'm going to move that we amend the $10,000 to $7,500, seeking a seconder.
Counselor McAlpine? It's been amended to $7,500, is there any comments or concerns? Call the vote for $7,500, all those in favor? Opposed? And carried? Thank you. Next.
The next request is from the, through you, Mr. Mayor, is for the Children's Safety Village of Brant, $10,000, provide safety education assistance with operational costs, support program, literature, classroom needs, equipment repairs and maintenance of the Jeep Sand Bicycles.
Someone to put it on the floor? Counselor Coleman, seconded by Counselor Leferye. Discussion, Mark?
Just by way of discussion, through you, Mr. Mayor, I do like that on their application, they had a very specific number about percentage of county residents served, and it's 26%. I just wanted to highlight that in discussion.
Any other comments? Well, Counselor Gatward?
Do we know, through you, to the treasurer, have they also applied for grants through the city and the Brant Community Foundation?
I do not know that.
You don't know that?
That's not something we would need to know here.
I think I saw somewhere where the Brant Community Foundation has given them funding in the past, but I'm sure there's lots of organizations that ask for grants from more than one place, but I just wondered.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Miller?
This is why we need the Brant Community Foundation.
Call the vote to give them their ask, all those in favor of granting the ask? Two? All those opposed? It's defeated, is there another motion to go on the floor? A motion to give them nothing? Counselor Chambers? Counselor Pierce? At this time, nothing, right now, they'll be revisited if there's money at the end, all those in favor are waiting? Yeah, okay, opposed to waiting? Okay, we're going to divert it, okay? Next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the next request from Crossing All Bridges Learning Center for $7,000 to purchase equipment, smart board and chairs for new expressive arts program.
So moved.
Counselor Wheat, Counselor Pierce? Okay, Counselor Pierce?
Okay, again, this is, this is an amazing center, I know personally a few folks that use it, good friends of mine, but again, if you look at the history over the years that we've been giving, and it seems to be going up and up, I, it went $7,000, then $5,000, now $7,000.
Back to where it was.
Okay, but I'm trying to, again, if everything keeps going up from previous years, we're going to get ourselves into a situation here. I support it, but I cannot support the $7,000.
Okay, looking for, we've had a seconder, any other discussion on giving them the full $7,000? Counselor Gatward?
I just have a question about, where is the three-year ask?
It's not, it's not in front of you yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on giving them the $7,000? Call the vote to give them their grant, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the next request from Five Oaks Education and Retreat Center for $10,000, create a diversity program in coordination with local school boards to focus on the intercultural dream of the center.
Counselor Miller puts it on the table?
Counselor Miller's, would like to move that we don't give them anything at this time.
Counselor Miller, Counselor Coleman? Call the vote to give them nothing at the moment, all those in favor? Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the next request from the Girl Guides of Canada for $1,500, support of Girl Guides trip to England in July 2019.
Counselor Coleman, Counselor Leferye, Counselor Wheat, want to speak to it?
Yes.
Speak, Ellen.
I look at those numbers, that award of $3,000, if you will recall, that was for a Brant County group, they came here and then they came back and thanked us. This group is not a Brant County group, this is a city group, this is a different group of Girl Guides that has nothing to do with the County of Brant. It should be a Brant County Council or Brant Community, David, you know the proper, you know what?
Community Foundation.
Community Foundation. This is not a Brant County group.
So it's on the floor for $1,500, seconded, Joan?
Where is this group from?
Branford.
Branford.
The Girl Guides group that was here the last two years, so we give them money each, the last two years, we spread it over two years, was from, they were a group of Girl Guides from St. George, and they fundraised, and they went last year, they came back in the fall, previous term of council, we're here, you'll recall, Joan, Brian, David, Robert, John, myself, they came back and thanked us. How many people even come back and thank? They did, and provided us with a book of what they did.
Counselor Leferye?
Just in their accompanying letter, I just want to point out, it says here, the participants include eight youth members, pathfinders and rangers who range in age from 13 to 18, and two registered adult members from Branford and Brant County. So it is unclear, but there's clearly some Brant County participation here, maybe a little bit more, this is a 13-200, maybe a little more information would be helpful, but I'm wondering why would it, is it because the overarching group, like who we cut the check to, is Girl Guides of Canada, why it says $3,000 last year, and, you know? Maybe that's a question for staff.
We didn't give $3,000 to Girl Guides of Canada, we gave it to the St. George Girl Guide group.
What I'm saying is, is it possible to get clarification on that?
I'm clarifying it for you right now.
As to why they're marked the same in the category?
Yeah.
Counselor Pierce?
Sorry, Heather?
I'm sorry.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, you probably, you are correct, like we should have tagged it with the branch or the...
Yeah, the branch.
Yeah, the, like, first scouts, I don't know what the Girl Guide term for it is, but each group has their, so we should have tagged it with that.
Counselor Pierce?
No, that's what I was just going to say, if you look at this, it appears that we gave the same people $3,000 last year, so this is a different group, clarification is there.
Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here we go, boundary issue, and that's what I don't like, boundary. This is the Girl Guides of Canada, doesn't matter where they live, in St. George, Branford, Onondaga, wherever the hell it is, it's the Girl Guides of Canada, and we're supporting the youth, and that's what I'm looking at, just supporting the youth, simple as that. I'm voting for, call the question, Mr. Mayor.
All those in, all those in favor of supporting $1,500 for the Girl Guides of Canada? Opposed? Carried? Next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the next request is from Grand River Council on Aging for $16,500 to be used towards core operating expenses necessary to continue the work of the GRCOA.
Counselor Miller and Counselor Leferye?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move $10,000.
I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry, what are you moving?
I'll move $10,000, and I'll gladly speak to it.
$10,000, seconded by Mark. Conversation, questions, concerns?
I'll just say...
Counselor Miller?
I'll just say, these guys, maybe it's just Lucy Barkley, I don't know, but they've put out a lot, a lot of good information, and we need it.
Counselor Leferye?
Yeah, one of the things that I think we also need to do is, we get, and I don't know if this is staff or them, but we do get the designation of being an age-friendly community, and I think we need to support that, but I'd like to see how much of that is, there's been some discussion from some members of the Grand River Council on Aging that we might be getting some of that designation because of our close ties with Branford, and not necessarily doing all of the same things ourselves, so I'd like to see a comparator in the future between what we do to be age-friendly versus what Branford does, and see that we have parity in order to actually earn that designation, but this is a great group, I served on it for a year or two, and they do a lot of good work for the county, and they're very, very mindful of serving the county.
Any other comments? The vote to give them a grant for, comment, oh, Counselor Gatward?
Thank you. Occasionally, we see things in the paper that they're doing, like that bus trip they take people on, but if they publish literature, is it possible for us to get a copy of what they are doing so we are informed?
Yeah, Lucy Markle would be glad to give you that, she's, and a phone call.
And a letter.
And a letter, and a plaque.
I'd just like to see that come to all of council.
Counselor Miller?
I should point out too that they've also been working with our Accessibility Committee, because at the end of the day, we tend to be working a lot on the same issue, so.
Any other discussion for $10,000? Call the question, give them their grant for $10,000, all those in favor? Opposed? And carried? Thank you, next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the next request from Grand Valley Education Society for $5,000, assist with operating costs and part-time support.
Putting it on the floor? Motion to give them nothing? Counselor Coleman, nothing? Seconded for nothing?
Seconded for nothing.
Counselor Wheat? Any discussion? Make, call the vote to give them nothing? All those in favor? Opposed? They get nothing right now. Kids can fly? Want to speak to it?
It's okay.
Mark and Counselor Wheat? Discussion on Kids Can Fly? Okay, call the vote to give them what they want, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, they get what they want? Oh, Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so, if I could, I, along the lines of, can we just get an update as to where we are?
Actually, we're at 88.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, we've, of the $150,000 that is available to allocate, we've allocated $88,525, with a remaining balance of $61,475, and right now, it's a de, if you do nothing more, it's a decrease to the median home of $3.35.
Thank you. Next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Kiwanis Club of Paris, Brant, Springtime in Paris for $6,000 to help support the Springtime in Paris Festival.
Counselor Leferye? Counselor Pierce? Discussion? Counselor Coleman?
Well, here we go, here we got one of these organizations, and last year they only had $2,500, now they want $6,000, so are we going to keep going up and up and up?
Counselor Leferye?
To be fair, there's a, there's a...
Counselor Leferye?
To be fair, there's a, through you, Mr. Mayor, there's a few organizations that have asked for less than we've given them as well, and none of them are from Paris.
Counselor Pierce? Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a comment, we got to stop with the Paris and the not Paris, this is for the county.
Exactly.
Okay, we need to stop that, people.
I have not, I've always supported things in Paris, and I'm going to support this too. Name one thing that I haven't supported in Paris. Give me that.
Strike those comments.
No, Mr. Mayor, I won't strike my comments, and I wasn't being specific, I'm just saying in general, there's comments going around this horseshoe, it's this, it's that, it's the county.
The full ask is for $6,000? There's a, there's a first and seconder, Counselor Chambers wants to speak to it?
Just to say that I support this, because it's, I remember when this wasn't, and it's a popular event, and getting more popular, and it's great for the people that like to do those kind of things, and it's something that, as a festival, it's increasing in popularity, and as such, there's more that they can do, and I support the grant.
Counselor Gatward?
And I'm going to support it because it brings people to the community, to our county, and they spend money here, it's good for tourism and economic development.
Counselor Wheat?
I'm supporting it, I can recall, two years ago, Russ Press asked me to help park cars down there, and I did, and he said there won't be that many people, but they had a group called Splashin' Boots, and we were overflowing with people. It brought a lot of people. I don't even know who Splashin' Boots are, but apparently they're pretty good.
Well, it's hard to penalize a festival for doing well, so, I mean, if they need more money and they're doing well, and they bring people to the county. Any other conversation or comments before we call the vote? Mark?
Just also, so that we're consistent, unlike other organizations we talked about, they didn't make a profit, right? They do require this funding in order to operate and provide this, so I just, we're being consistent with things that we've discussed previously.
But you should never give a grant out for more than 50% of what it takes for operating, so I don't know what their budgets, I don't have it in front of me right now, but...
It's $22,000 or $23,000.
But it's not, it's not real good to give them more than 50% of their operating. But anyway, with that being said, all those in favor of giving them what they want, $6,000? All those opposed? And they get $6,000. Next, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the next request is from Noizemaker Presents for $9,804.68 to expand the Drink Fest event from one to two days, develop a new marketing and promotion strategy to advertise the festival.
Motion to get it on the floor, Counselor Miller?
I'll move that we give no money at this time, and I'll speak to that motion.
Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Wheat, all those in favor of not giving them anything at this moment? Opposed? Okay, we'll revisit it if we have time. Oh, you want to speak to it?
Well, I just, I mean, to me, this is kind of, it's not unlike the one we just seen, Springtime in Paris, here we have an event, it brings people to the community, and it's not like we're giving money, I mean, we're giving money to a group, but at the same time, they are, like I say, bringing tourism to the county, so I would almost, it would be nice if we had a criteria for these kinds of, these kinds of grants, but I'll leave it at that, because like I say, I look at that one, Noizemaker's, and I don't see it much dissimilar to what the one, again, that we just approved for...
Counselor Leferye?
Yeah, it did make a profit last year, and it does provide a ton of economic boost to the county, but maybe if we don't approve anything now, maybe we can really support our tourism department to help support them in other ways.
Next, please.
The next request, through you, Mr. Mayor, is from the Ontario Genological Society...
We voted to revisit it. Yeah, next, please.
Ontario Genological Society, Brant County Branch, $4,500 is the ask to aid in ongoing operational costs such as rent supplies.
Get it on the floor, Counselor Miller?
I'll move $2,500, Mr. Mayor.
$2,500? Twenty-five hundred dollars, seconded by John McAlpine. Conversation to give them twenty-five hundred dollars, Counselor Miller.
Well, I would hope if anyone had questions, they would've asked the presenter when she was here, and I thought, uh, I mean, she was here for a long time up there, so.
So, any other concerns about twenty-five hundred? Call the vote to give them twenty-five hundred dollars, all those in favor? Opposed, grant given. Thank you, next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're at Paris Agricultural Society, request for four thousand.
Counselor Coleman, Counselor Chambers, Counselor Wheat obviously supports it. Uh, any conversation? Call the vote to give them what they want, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried, next.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. The request from Paris Curling Club for twenty-five thousand. Funds will be used to offset the cost of installing new refrigeration pipes.
Counselor Wheat puts it on the floor, seconded by- Seconded for Counselor Wheat, Counselor Coleman. Discussion, Counselor Wheat wants to speak to it?
Yeah, I'll speak to it. We gave them, uh, five thousand dollars last year, and I'd like to com, kinda combine the two items here. I will move that we give them five thousand dollars again. And then coming up is six thousand dollars for this special, um, provincial championship that's coming up. If you've been following in the paper this weekend, they've built a curling club outside the rink, 'cause this is their one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary. And, uh, they don't hire an ice maker here in Paris, it's volunteers, there's four guys there, and they've done a great job to get an outside rink, and I hope it, this snow, the cold is certainly helping them, maybe it's even too cold, but, uh, they're gonna have an outdoor Bonsfield there, uh, Friday and Saturday. Uh, I encourage you to go up and watch it.
So it's on the floor for five thousand?
I, I, I would support for the five thousand, that's what we gave them last year. This is gonna be about a five-year fundraising goal for them to, uh, get close, well over a hundred thousand dollars to put in a new floor. It's the original floor, and, uh, it's time to replate, and they've got a good plan, they're not gonna tear that floor out, they're doing it as cheap as possible, they're gonna build the new floor on top of the existing floor. So I've got a motion on the floor to give them five, and then I'll speak to that six thousand.
We have a seconder, we're gonna call, call the vote? Okay, any other discussion on the curling club? Five thousand dollars for the grant, all those in favor? Opposed? They get five thousand dollars, next, please.
Now I'll move that six thousand for this.
So Counselor Wheat and Counselor Lefairier, uh, any other questions as to why we're giving them this six thousand dollars? Maybe Counselor Wheat could speak to it, oh, Counselor Pierce?
Um, again, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm, I'm supporting this, but again, this is an example, if you, if you look at the information they gave us, okay? So they gave us, uh, if you wanna call it a budget sheet or whatever, but they've got a line in there for budget, and they've got a line in there for actuals, and, you know, ninety-five percent of it is not there for the actuals, and it, so if you look at this, the, the total expenses budgeted for were twelve thousand five hundred, and the actuals were four hundred. So again, this speaks to us getting part information to make a decision on. I, I support this, but it, it, it troubles me when people are coming for requests and they're not giving us what we've asked for year after year. Give us a financial statement, well, the, I, I don't know, it just, it troubles me, that's all.
Counselor Lefairier.
If we, if we look at this, uh, they, they lost six thousand dollars and they're asking for six thousand dollars. That's, that's the total expenses, uh, twelve, uh, fifty, uh, total net profit minus six thousand, that's what they're asking for.
It's up to this council to decide whether you should give that to them. Counselor Wheat.
I'll speak to it, this is a one-time deal. To get a provincial championship, whether it's men or women, like right now, the men and women are combined, they're at Almyra, the Dan Snyder Center, if you wanna see a really good facility, go take that in, folks, not just for the curling, but for the facility itself. This is a one-time thing for this community, it's the one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary of this curling club. These are the, the people that you're gonna watch on TV five years from now. This is a championship for both boys and girls, and the, the winners here will go on to a Canadian championship.
Counselor Pierce?
Seeing the best.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For, for clarification, I, I am in support of this, I, I think it's fantastic that we're bringing this to the county. My point that I'm trying to make here, and this isn't the only one, we ask for specific information for our budget grant request, and we're not getting it. So when we do go to the, um, you know, potentially to a new system next year, we need to make sure that if we're asking for A, B, C, that we get A, B, C, or it's a no.
Again, at the foundation, this would be disqualified, if they don't give you what you want, they, they don't, they don't get in, so.
So, at any rate.
Anyway, conversation for this is finished, all those in favor of giving them what they want? Opposed? Carried, I, I'm voting, sorry. It passed without me. Uh, next, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Paris Horticultural Society is looking for two thousand dollars to purchase landscape material, trees, jobs, perennials.
Put it on the floor. Counselor Miller and Counselor Coleman? Any discussion? All those in favor of giving them two thousand dollars? Opposed? Grant given, next.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the request from the Paris Museum and Historical Society for twenty thousand helps sustain ongoing expenses for facility.
Counselor Pierce puts it on the floor.
I, actually, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I couldn't make an amendment, we've given fifteen the last two years, I would put a motion on for the fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen thousand.
Seeking a seconder for fifteen? Counselor McAlpine? Discussion on the fifteen? Mark?
Um, I won't, I won't support the fifteen, um, because I, I do wanna see them get the twenty, um, in part because I know it's, again, called the Paris Museum and Historical Society, but it is the greater county and the greater region, to be frank, and I think they gave a very good, strong presentation. They did. Uh, I talked to Counselor, um, Howes, who can't be here today, and he brought this up that I, I feel is worth sharing. There, there's been such a push in our community, uh, around trying to keep the small-town feel, and the horse is out of the barn on that, but one of the things that does keep the small-town feel is being able to celebrate our heritage and being able to, 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 to push, uh, in, in those sort of directions. They're also gonna go through, uh, you know, a lot of, um, uh, they've gone through a lot of, essentially, this is to support an increase in volunteerism that we're always saying we want, and for the value for money, I, I won't support the fifteen because I wanna support the twenty, and I'll, I'll make a motion of that if this fails.
So it's on the floor for fifteen thousand dollars, um, it has a seconder. Uh, gonna call the vote? All those in favor of giving them fifteen? All those in favor of not giving them fifteen?
In order to give them twenty.
Yeah, okay, so they're getting fifteen. I, I sort of agree with you, Mark, just because, but I'm also looking at the balance, uh, we have twenty thousand dollars left with some pretty big asks. If it was alphabetically, they would've been better shape, but. Uh, next, please.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Paris Plain Cemetery Committee is looking for five thousand five hundred, um, in, in least increased long-term care fund.
So, Counselor Pierce?
I wanna speak to it.
Seconder? Counselor McAlpine? Wanna speak to it?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, so we've given five thousand the last couple of years, and then fifty-five hundred this year. I'm trying to understand, where is the point where it would be beneficial for us to take over looking after that cemetery as we do all the other ones? And that, if I could, through you to-
Yeah, staff.
One of the staff, I don't know who would be. And I, I get the, you know, people volunteer their time and stuff, but I mean-
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the Mint, the Briefman Authority of Ontario does encourage us as a municipality to try to support these smaller organizations, because they will end up in our hands if we don't, uh, through the legislation. It will cost more than fifty-five hundred dollars a year to operate this, uh, cemetery if we were to take it over.
That's what I'm looking for, thank you.
Anything else to be said? Call the vote to give them fifty-five hundred dollars as a grant, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried, next, please.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Paris Santa Claus Parade Committee is looking for fifteen hundred again to pay for musical bands.
Counselor Coleman, Counselor Pierce, anyone wanna say anything to the Santa Claus Parade? Call the vote to support the parade, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried, next, please.
Uh, next request? Paris to Ancaster Race? Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Paris to Ancaster Cycling Race is looking for twenty-five hundred to ha, enhance the start line in Paris and St. George by formalizing the VIP area.
Move to give them nothing.
Counselor Wheat moves to give them nothing, seconded by Counselor Coleman.
Is that at this time, sir?
At this time, until we're finished, we, we can revisit it.
Wanna make sure.
All those in favor of giving them nothing at the moment? Okay, move on, next, please.
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor. Salt Springs Church Heritage Society is looking for five hundred again.
Counselor Coleman, Counselor Wheat, discussion? All those in favor of the grant? Okay, thank you, next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Scouts Canada Camp in Pisa is looking for seven thousand, upgrade water system.
Recommendations? Counselor Coleman?
I'll move five thousand.
Five thousand, seconded by- Counselor Miller? Any discussion for five thousand? Call the vote to give them five thousand, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you, next.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Society of St. Vincent de Paul looking for two thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and fourteen cents to cover the cost of a laptop.
Counselor Lefairier? A second by Counselor Miller. Anyone wanna speak to this, Mark?
Yeah, so th, this is one of those things where this is, again, directly related to serving the county, the, the way their system works is that they, they, they have to go on-site to see who, uh, they can support and how they can support them, and, um, because we're sort of, uh, ring around the city where they're situated, um, this would really help to enhance, literally, the services for the most vulnerable people in our community, the folks who are leaving abusive relationships, the folks who have nothing, the folks who, you know, they're getting them towels and food and clothing and, uh, helping them with rent, and the, the cost of, to social services would be a lot more than this, and it's volunteers, uh, who do great work.
Anything else to say on behalf of the grant? Counselor Miller?
I, I will say, I, uh, I do donate to these guys every month, um, they use all volunteers, they do know how to leverage a dollar, and as Counselor Lefairier says, they go to places that you do not wanna go to, um, and there's a lot of county residents in there as well.
Anything else to be added? All those in favor of the grant? Opposed? Thank you, next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, South Dumfries Historical Society is requesting twenty thousand capital improvements, which would include replacement, repair of windows.
Okay, before we get it on the floor, the, the magic number remaining is fifty-seven, fifty, sixty-three? Fifty-three? Okay, someone wanna put it on the floor? Uh, Counselor Wheat, seconded by Counselor McAlpine. Discussion on the twenty thousand dollars for the South Dumfries Historical Society. Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I can't support twenty, um, we've given, uh, you know, we started ten, then we went down to five, um, I, I can't support twenty, but I'd be willing to make another motion if it's, if it is defeated.
Anyone else wanna speak to the grant? Uh, Counselor Gatward?
Uh, thank you. Are these different windows, like, I thought someone said they put new windows in already, was that John Wursting when he was here? Are these different upper and lower windows, or am I confused?
Counselor McAlpine?
Um, so the lower windows, yeah, need to be replaced in the building, so the other thing to keep in mind with this particular grant, we're also supporting the Paris Port Dover Band, they use the facilities there, there's over a hundred people in, um, uniform for that band, and also the St. George's, um, Applefest has their offices there, and so they enable keeping the, uh, the museum open two days a week in addition to a third day for volunteers, so the facilities have really changed around in the last couple of years, and so that's why I'm in favor of this particular motion, so.
Counselor Lefairier.
I, I'm also in favor of this motion, and, and part of the reason is because I see this as almost emergency funding, there were issues that occurred, uh, with Applefest, and, and, again, weather-dependent, and I think that's out of the control of the individuals, I don't see them coming back to us if we give them, uh, twenty thousand, saying they want twenty thousand next year, I see this as a one-off because of a, of an issue that was out of their control.
With the remaining figure that we have to give away, I don't know how this committee deals with, with coming up now. Counselor Wheat?
I can help you with that, you go over it, just like we have for the last fifteen years, you go over it.
Is counsel prepared to proceed, knowing they're going over the budget?
Yep.
All right, proceed.
The, the hundred and fifty is a, is a earmark, and we, we make those decisions as, as adults who are elected to make these decisions. Also, I think, again, because St. George is S in the alphabet, I, I don't wanna see them get short shrift, uh, because we've exhausted monies, uh, earlier on, I, I think this is, this is something we'll have to discuss, but, um, I mean, we still have some items left, but, but we need to discuss it, and we need to look at that dollar increase to median home and see if it's worth it for the taxpayer.
So on the floor is twenty, uh, ten thousand dollar support?
Twenty, twenty, twenty.
Full twenty?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Counselor Gatward?
Well, the Paris Historical Society requested twenty, and we cut them to fifteen, so I don't feel that we should give one, what, the twenty thousand and not the other, so I think we should lower it to fifteen thousand.
There was, there was people here that were gon, that wanted to give Paris twenty, but the vote got called for fifteen, and if you'd have voted down the fifteen, the twenty would've come on the floor.
Counselor Chambers?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, in my mind, that would be like comparing an apple to an orange, but, uh, that, that having been said, I believe the Memorial Hall is now in the hands of a, a s, a non-county hands, it, it used to be in county hands, and that is benefit to the county for it to be in their hands, and if they need support, I think they did us a favor by acquiring, and I, I don't, uh, mind giving them twenty, and I, somebody said that it's, it's a one-time, a thing, uh, for, for emergency things, that's what Mark said, that, so I, I, I will support the, uh, the request, the one-time request.
Any, any other discussion before we call the vote to give them the twenty thousand dollar grant? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving them twenty thousand dollars? Opposed? And carried, thank you. Next, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, St. George Firefighters Association Christmas Parade for a thousand to help cover costs of goo, goody bags, hot chocolate, and tibets.
Counselor Pierce and Counselor Chambers, any conversation to the Santa Claus Parade? Counselor Chambers? He'll be there, and he'll be sober. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, next, please.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. St. George Garden Club is looking for one thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifteen cents.
Counselor Wheat? Counselor McAlpine? Any discussion, Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been saying all night long, you know, we're going up and up and up and up, I need to draw attention to this particular one, there are a couple that are actually, the requests are going down, so just so people know, I'm not on the one side of the fence here.
With that being said, is there any other discussion to the Garden Club in St. George? Seeing none, call the vote to give them what they want, all those in favor? Opposed and carried, thank you, next.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. St. George Lawn Bowling is looking for six thousand seven hundred.
Counselor Wheat?
It's getting late.
Counselor McAlpine? Any discussion on the St. George Lawn Bowling Club? If not, seeing none? All those in favor of giving them what they need? All those opposed? Did they get it?
Yep.
Okay, thank, thank you. They got it.
Who's opposed?
Yes, Snoot, huh? It wasn't? Against it? Can we redo it again? You, you saw it?
Who voted again? I voted again.
Yes?
There was only four.
There's only four.
I voted for it.
They get their money? Counselor Gatward, quit, quit doing that.
Oh, I come in here and nobody said all in favor, and nobody counted it, I guess.
Next, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There, there's a request from the St. George- Through you, Mr. Mayor, there's a request from the St. George Legion Branch 605 for fifteen thousand for replacement of two furnaces.
So moved.
Counselor Wheat?
I think you get two furnaces for less than that.
Looking for a second, Counselor McAlpine, discussion, Counselor Gatward?
I don't think you need that much to get two furnaces. I know that, I know that I paid a bill for two furnaces and it wasn't that high. It was less than ten-thousand dollars, I guess, and it was for a church. I'm not sure how many square feet the Legion is or whether they're getting a deluxe furnaces, but I can only support ten-thousand dollars.
Okay, Counselor Ferrier?
Just want to speak to this. Again, it's general, it's not specific to this group, but it includes this group. I wish and hope that groups that were asking for this much money would make delegations to council. I think that helps strengthen their case. I don't feel like, even though I read the report, I don't feel like I have enough information to say yes to fifteen grand at this time.
Counselor Wheat first.
Actually, the St. George Legion was prepared to come and make a delegation and I told them that I would speak on their behalf tonight rather than take up, and you can clear that with Heather Boyd, because Heather and I talked and I said I will speak on their behalf at budget.
Thank you, Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you then, it appears that Counselor Wheat is going to speak on their behalf?
Yep.
Where's the other quotes they got for this?
Pardon?
Where are the other quotes that they had for this?
I couldn't tell you.
Thank you.
So, this is my problem. I see one quote here. You're speaking for them, I'd like to have your response.
Well, perhaps I'll try and answer that question, that was probably their best quote. I just put, okay, one year and one week ago, I put in a furnace in my house, fifteen-hundred square feet, and it cost me five cents short of ten-thousand dollars.
Thank you, Counselor.
You look at the size of the Legion, it's quite a bit bigger than John Wheat's house at twenty-five West Street.
I just shed a little light on the quote. It's not just for two furnaces, it's for two HVAC units because Mr. Radcliffe includes ACs as well. And I will say, I know Don personally, I've seen the work Don's done, he's done work for me, he's done work for the county, and the guy's as solid as the day is long.
Counselor Pierce?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not saying that his work is bad, I'm not saying any of that. Again, it gets back to my comments before, we've got one quote here and there's nothing in here that indicates that was the best quote. There's nothing in here to indicate there was any other quotes. It's just, here's a quote for fifteen grand.
Counselor Gatward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Counselor Pierce and I also would like to say, how much have they fundraised towards this project? I know that the South Brant Legion, when they needed a new chairlift, they fundraised for it. And then I think at one point Mayor Eddie told them they should ask the county to help them out with part of it, and they did, but it wasn't for the whole project. They had been fundraising for more than two years to try and come up with the money themselves. They do have quite a bit of revenue that they take in in one year. And I guess through you to Counselor Wheat, how much have they fundraised for this project?
I can't.
Counselor Wheat?
I can't give you an exact figure, I'm sorry. But I do know they're fundraising, I do know they do a lot for the community, I do know that two Saturday nights out of the four, they have a fish fry, Coleman's been there, Chambers has been there, McAlpine's been there, they have a steak night, I've seen Bailey there. They do a lot of things in the community. Legions are struggling throughout this country. And we've got three legions locally here, South Brant, Paris, and St. George. And I think we need to step up and support our legions because they're a dying creation in this country.
Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little point of order to what he's saying here. I absolutely support the legions. This has nothing to do with the question that I'm trying to get answered here. So, I don't appreciate that comment at all because I absolutely support the legions.
I didn't say you didn't.
You just said that we need to step up and support the legions, we have three of them here.
We must a collective group.
Counselor Ferrier, do you have something to say? No? Any other discussion on, Counselor Chambers?
I would be remiss if I didn't say there's another legion in the county.
Burford, I'm sorry, Burford.
And that's not just Burford, Burford, Cathcart, Harley, 106 or whatever, the Masons. So, and again, if this was any of the legions, I would support the request. It's a one-time request, actually it's a capital improvement and it's not going to be here next year because they're not going to need two furnaces, but it shows a support for the legions and not that if you disagree with the amount or the process, you don't support the legions. But in this case, I would support the grant request since it's a one-time request and would be put to good use for the community.
Thank you, Counselor Chambers, Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with Counselor Chambers on this. They only asked for three grand in 2017, none for last year, and fifteen for this year, so I can support this. It is a one-time situation. They were coming back every year and something like that's a different story. Call a question.
No other discussion, Counselor Chambers?
And I just want to make one further point, I think it's important, that since it is a one-time request, when we compare the running total to last year, it wouldn't be like, so you have to kind of moderate your amounts with one-time requests. We may go over what we did last year, but may go under the next year.
Thank you. Any other conversation? All those in favor of supporting the grant for fifteen-thousand dollars? Opposed? And carried, thank you, next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the next request is from Victim Services of Brant for five-thousand.
Oh, I have to, I have to, I've just been told by the clerk that I need to extend the time of the meeting, we're over the curfew time. Move to extend, Counselor Pierce, seconded by Counselor Gatward. All those in favor of extending the meeting? Thank you.
So moved for Victim Services of Brant.
Seconded. Counselor Ferrier, any discussion? Victim Services of Brant? All those in favor of giving them the grant? Opposed? They get their grant, next, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the request from Women's Sledge Hockey of Canada for ten-thousand, grant to be used to host national team training camp and exhibition series for the team.
Put it on the floor? Counselor Pierce, seeking a second. Counselor Coleman, discussion, Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm absolutely in support of bringing this to the county of Brant. We had a similar thing a couple of years ago, we made it a failure, it's a great success. We have a focus on not so steep, but I cannot support that.
All right, ten-thousand's in front of you unless you want to amend it, Counselor Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd love to support the same amount that we supported for the men's, but I have no idea how much that is at this time.
What was the men's amount?
Sorry, I don't know.
Does anyone have that information as to how much we gave the men's?
Can I move for a deferral on that one until we have the information and we can deal with that on another evening?
All right, seconded. Counselor Chambers, all those to defer, all in favor, thank you, next, please.
Oh, sorry. Through you, Mr. Mayor, there's a request from the Burford Ram Rodeo for twenty-five-hundred.
Put it on the floor, Counselor Chambers?
I'll move it to put it on the floor and then I'll just speak briefly to it.
Okay, okay, Counselor Pierce, you're going to speak to it, Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, it's my understanding, this is kind of like seed money. What they're attempting to do is establish an annual event and in order for, it was, they did it last year for the first time and they would like to continue it, but they actually fell a little bit short last year in terms of making it sustainable, so that's why the request is here this year to encourage it to become an annual event and as a one-time seed grant. And hopefully next year it will be self-sufficient and be off to the races or off to the rodeo if you want to go that way.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the request for twenty-five-hundred? All those in favor of giving them the grant? Opposed? Thank you, next.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there's a request from Big Brothers Big Sisters of Grand Erie for fourteen-thousand-four-hundred.
Mark, put it on the floor? No?
I'll put a motion to not give them any money at this time.
Motion on the floor not to give them anything at this time? Counselor Coleman, seconded. Any conversation before we vote to give them nothing at this point? All those in favor of giving them nothing? It's a shame, but that's the way it has to be. Next, please.
There is a remaining, through you, Mr. Mayor, there's an amount there for five-thousand that we traditionally have put in, so we have a little bit left to allocate out throughout the year.
I'll move that, we'll put it on the floor. Five-thousand, we'll put it in a.
Counselor Coleman?
Second.
Counselor Wheat? Counselor Miller?
Again, going back to Joanne's presentation earlier tonight, what I liked about them other than they take it an arm's length, they have a criteria, is they do that grant process four times a year, whereas here, you know, you got to have it in by budget time. So, anyways, I'll support the five, but that's another thing I like about.
And I would encourage anyone at this table to go back to their wards and encourage them all to come to the foundation or not go to the foundation, I guess now, not come to it, but go to it because you heard the deadline was October, so there's lots of time. And if everything's in order and the paperwork is in order, they would all qualify. So, anyone who didn't maybe get what they wanted tonight, I encourage you to take it back to your wards and encourage them to call Joanne. We have a second of the five-thousand, any other discussion, Mark?
Yeah, just also, I think it bears mentioning that we received a higher grant, almost double the amount of requests in sheer dollars than in previous years. So, it's also very, very competitive. Some of the noes were because of the strength of the applications weren't there, this is a competitive process, more so than other years when your requests increase by double, there's some folks who are not going to get what they were hoping for, right?
So, let's call the vote for the five-thousand, all those in favor? Opposed and carried? And before we call the grants to completion, can we go back and revisit the ones that we, Counselor Pierce?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I think we need to go back and revisit them, but just so everybody's aware, if the ones that we, there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there was nine of them, and we're talking seventy-seven-thousand dollars. So, again, I kind of semi-understand why we wanted to set them aside, but now it's kind of put us into a situation where, yes, we can go over, but wow.
Counselor Chambers?
I'll try a motion, Mr. Mayor, and you can see if it's in order or not, but I would move that the grants that we approved this evening by vote be consolidated into the budget for further deliberation. And I'll leave it at that and that leaves the ones that we did not, that we gave nothing to at this time, it's still on the table and can be brought forward at any time prior to the finalization of the budget and that would give us a chance to rethink, but I think the ones that we've already done are fair and that's what I'd like to do, move that the approved grants be consolidated into the 2020 budget and the opportunity for additional discussion and be afforded throughout the budget process.
I have a second and Counselor Coleman? Any other discussion, everyone's clear, we're going to wrap up the grants as they appear and what we've done to two-hundred and, two-hundred-thousand, what, six-nine-six? Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, and we do still have one to go back and review when we get the information on the women's sledge hockey.
Yeah, yeah. And we're going to give them whatever we gave the men. Is that right?
Well, it's got to be voted on.
All right, so it's just going to come back to council?
Yeah, that's one equal opportunity.
Okay, so we have the motion, we have it seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Good, it's finished. Counselor Pierce?
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you, if I could, so going through all this, interesting things that pop out. So, there was fourteen requests that we have given in the past year that did not request money this year. There was eighteen requests that we went through that the amount over the years has increased. There was seventeen new requests. There was only five requests that were the same as they have been in past years and there was only two requests out of all of those that the amount actually went lower. Again, I really think that, and I apologize for being late again tonight, I really think that the part of that presentation that I saw at the beginning, maybe that's the way to go because like everybody else around the horseshoe here, I don't like this night at all because it is, it puts us in a very difficult situation and there's just not enough information given. And unfortunately, we may need to get ourselves to the point where we do set the criteria that you either have it all, all the criteria there to even be able to get anything, because there was too many of them tonight that didn't have information and the folks aren't here to speak to them. And it makes it very, very difficult for us to make decisions because this isn't our money we're giving away. This is the taxpayers' money.
Yep. But it's a decision that council has made to put this money aside for, to keep the county moving and keep them happy and make it worth living here. Counselor Coleman?
No taxpayers are the ones making the application for the grants.
Thank you.
Except the girls.
The Agenda nine-A, City of Brantford, correspondence regarding paramedic services budget?
Moved to receive.
Moved to receive, seconded, Counselor Ferrier, all those in favor?
Wait, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gatward?
I'd like to comment on this. Earlier, earlier Counselor Chambers spoke about social services and the city being the main provider for that joint service. This also is a joint service and the county, I believe, is still the main service provider that runs the paramedic services. And I was recently told that our cost per capita for ambulance is very, very low. Do we need to remind the City of Brantford about that in our response? And I, I don't want to jeopardize this emergency service by having budget cuts that could affect patients. The patients are supposed to come first. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, if I could, I've had the pleasure of being Chair of Community Service for the last couple of years and it really troubles me when I get things like this from the City of Brantford because I'm going to simply say, let's look at the attendance from the folks of City of Brantford that were supposed to be at the community service meetings and I won't say anymore about that. I am absolutely, I'm appalled that this is the second year in a row that they've asked us to do this thing and if we look at the attendance, they're not there.
Thank you, any other comments before, on receiving the information? Thank you.
Oh, I have one.
Counselor Ferrier?
Just around process, I believe the Paramedic Services Committee are the ones that are going to have to deal with this. I sit on that as the county rep, one of the county reps, so I think we have to wait to see what that, just by point of order, we have to wait to see what that committee says in order to get it back to council to then really make comment. And let's see what the services, the committee does because they may, they have every right to say back to Brantford, well, tough, this is what we're asking for and we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Michael?
Mayor Bailey, if I could, and this raises a problem and I was hoping to speak to this. So, the resolution from the city says it be referred back to the Paris Paramedic Services Committee. The Paramedic Services Committee hasn't met yet, so, and I just, I looked at the agreement that we just passed last year and the effective date of that agreement was December first, but we provided this budget through the city, I think, before that. And I think it was understood with that agreement, it's not specifically stated in that agreement, that it would start to come into effect for future budgets, not this budget. So, it's a struggle for me as your C E O to know what to do with this because the Paramedic Services hasn't met yet, it has no context to make a decision on a budget that it didn't prepare. So, I wanted to bring that to this council's attention. It may influence how you deal with this comment from the. attention. It may, it may influence how you deal with this, this comment from the, or this resolution from the city, so.
Thank you. Counselor Lefaria?
Yeah, I think that that's correct, but when I look at this, this is, I saw this as a little bit of posturing from the city, to be frank. They were asking police who, Branford Police, not County Police, Branford Police, who have a pretty extended budget to go back. And I think they, my read of that meeting was they were asking paramedics to do it too, as another first responder, for parity with the police services. I don't think it's warranted or justified for the paramedic services. And if we don't have an ability to meet as a paramedic service at this time in their timeframes, then they don't get a response back. They're asking a nonentity to respond. I think we send back exactly what we did the first time. They put us in an awkward position, because they know the system, and they know what's going on. This, this reeks of political theater, no offense to our neighbors.
Counselor Gatward?
Is it the first Tuesday or the first month we have met the paramedic meetings? Or has that been changed?
Ms. Mayor, just a reminder that we approved a new governance agreement for the paramedic services last year. It created a new paramedic services committee that has, and it has not met yet. It's supposed to meet quarterly, and we haven't scheduled that first meeting, because we assume our first meeting has to be an orientation session. And if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, we didn't receive the city appointments to that committee until the council meeting in December. So we've only, only had a month to start getting, getting ramped up to have that committee. I can note that Ms. Stevenson and Mr. King and I are meeting, I think, next week to talk about that first meeting, which we had originally had in our minds to have in the first week of March. And then that would put that committee in good line to start working on the budget, which it has to deliver to the two municipalities in June, as per the agreement. So that's our, our plan, but...
Counselor Lefaria?
Can we, can we direct staff then to, to send correspondence to the City of Branford stating that their request is not possible this time due to the technicalities of the process? And as an official response, are we able, I'm asking staff if we're able to do that.
Counselor Miller?
Well, I'll let you rule on that. I mean, I would just refer to the committee and be done with it.
But if you don't meet till March, there's no committee to meet.
But that, I'm just saying, that's what I would do, because they're the ones that have, they know this.
There's a motion on the table to receive.
Yep. Counselor Chambers?
And I'll make an amendment to the motion that it be received and that it be referred to staff.
Second, Mark, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. I motion to reconvene as a council. Counselor Coleman, Counselor Gatward, we're back sitting as council. 11 on the agenda correspondence. Motion to receive. Counselor Coleman, Counselor Pierce, Michael?
Pardon me, Mayor Bailey. I asked to put this on the agenda this evening, just for your, for your awareness. It rolled in yesterday, and I just, just very quickly, this is about changes to the growth plan to the Greater Golden Horseshoe, and it notes that there's consultation, and the consultation, starting with the county, that the county would be involved with, is a week away, so it's a very short time. The reason that I, I wanted to put it on this evening's agenda, we will be sending staff to this, which is appropriate. But there's a line that also says, also, I'm inviting you to please let us know if there are any active community groups in your municipality that would have an interest in participating in these discussions. And that is something that as staff, we don't feel we should, we should be weighing in on, so I wanted to bring it to, to council's attention as soon as I could. This is the only meeting that you've got before these, this consultation takes place. And if there are any community groups that you would like to refer this, I would suggest that could be done maybe through a motion, but that's my, my suggestion.
Thank you. Counselor Lefaria?
Yeah, we need to speak to this. This is, this is ridiculous. When, when the last, we had a report about the, the other very whipped-together consultation with the province, where it was a very tight agenda, and just, and now they said, well, we'll have another, we'll have another community consultation. Great. And I spoke to that, and I said, well, we need to, as a county, have some community consultation if the province doesn't. The province gives us four business days' notice for their second consultation on this very important issue, not giving us any time to actually have a community consultation, asking us to whip together community groups, very broad category of mostly volunteers who mostly work, to show up February 4th somewhere at some time. This, this is not consultation. This is whipped together, pushed through, and, and there needs to be, there needs to be additional consultation after this. All, all we can really do is, we could put together a group, a list of groups, like the CCOB and others, that we might want to invite to it. But their inability to attend potentially might look very, very poor, and then be used against the community as a whole. Consultation, like, this is, this is as controversial as the Bill 66 Schedule 10, and yet the ability to actually comment on it is a very tight timeframe. Hopefully, there are more community consultations, and maybe there will be, but that's not apparent in the correspondence. Just, that needs to be out there.
Thank you for your comments. Counselor Gatward?
Thank you. And I agree with Counselor Lefaria, and I think that we should request that the Anne-Marie Byagrove extend the date for the Southwest Regional Roundtable from February 4th to February 15th or beyond February 21st. I think we should make that request. I, I don't think four days' notice is acceptable, especially, I'm sure, to Niagara, Haldeman, Hamilton, or the city. And the only group I could think of that might be interested in this from Brant County is Sustainable Brant.
Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment on a guy. I, I think it's unbelievable that they give the four days, but to Counselor Gatward's suggestion of sending it back with just us as the county of Brant saying, hey, we want another date, we don't stand a chance. The only way that that could possibly work, and I don't think it will anyway, is if we were to get in contact with Niagara and Branford and Haldeman and Hamilton, and everybody send one in, all parties. But again, I don't even think that'll work. I agree with Counselor Lefaria here. This is being crammed down our throat with no location, no time. It's brutal.
Counselor Lefaria?
Maybe, whether it's a motion or not, maybe we can direct staff to, to, to report on the feelings of council, like the discussion that was held around the horseshoe, this horseshoe, not that horseshoe, when they are asked for input, if, if at all possible.
Second, so would you want to do, direct staff to?
Extend the consultation?
Well, I don't think that's going to happen.
I'll put a motion on the floor then, or an amendment to the motion to receive, to direct staff to discuss the concerns that were discussed at this table tonight.
And do what with it?
Report it at the, it's supposed to be a consultation. I imagine there'll be asked questions at the consultation to...
Seconded by?
Staff are going.
Coleman?
Send it to staff.
Send it to staff.
Yeah.
We're sending staff.
We are sending staff, yes. And, and to extend an invite to the CCOB and Sustainable Brant, if at all possible for them to get there, when we have the information about where and when it's being held.
And, and I agree with Counselor Pierce, but we should contact the city and Haldeman and the other municipalities, because we don't even know where the meeting is.
Right.
So, make it.
By the bridge.
Right by the bridge.
Make it later in February.
All right. We can, we can ask staff to do that for us. With that being said, number 12 on the agenda is the next, scheduling the next meeting, which is Thursday, February the 7th. On, on your motion. Okay. All those in favor of staff directive? Opposed? Carried. Next meeting, February the 7th, here in the council chamber.
Why have we changed from a, from a Wednesday to a Thursday?
It's probably a typo, John.
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not. It's changed.
It's changed.
It's changed.
Normally, we've had our budget meetings on a Wednesday. Now, next it's a Thursday.
I think there was a number of people that couldn't be here.
Attend for attendance. It's been changed for attendance. There's going to be too many people away the regular night.
That's their problem.
Counselor Chambers?
This was decided on and moved by a resolution, I believe. I cannot be here because I'm at another budget session, and it's inappropriate for council to be scheduling budget sessions when they're also sending people to other avenues where they're supposed to be there. So I either get criticized for not attending that budget session or not attending this budget session, if it's on a Wednesday night. So that's why we moved it to Thursday, because everybody could be here.
Well, that, that's what the, that's what the next date is, a Thursday.
Yes.
So who's, who's blocking at that?
I'm not. I just had a question.
Yeah. I think, I think everyone needs to go home and go to sleep. I need a motion to adjourn. Counselor Pierce, we stand adjourned.